All right. Good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Crestwood Board of Education. I call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock and we'll ask Nadia, Mrs. Berry, if you would please take role.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ansonik.
Here.
Ms. Berry's here. Falaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Ms. Kaminsky? Ms. Kaminsky?
Sue?
Oh.
Sue, you're on mute.
Sue, mute.
Are you muted?
Unmute. Raise your hand if you're here.
Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute because I lost my screen too. I'm here.
Okay, Ms. Krasanik?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And the consent agenda, please, Mrs. Berry.
Okay, Board of Education recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda which include the August 10, 2020 Board Agenda, the minutes from the organizational meeting on Monday, July 27, 2020, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, July 27, 2020, the minutes from the special meeting on August 3, 2020, the minutes from the special meeting on Thursday, August 6, 2020, and the check register dated July 1 through July 31, 2020.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the items listed on the consent agenda which include the August 10, 2020 Board Agenda, the minutes from the organizational meeting on Monday, July 27, 2020, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, July 27, 2020, the minutes from the special meeting on Monday, August 3, 2020, the minutes from the special meeting on Thursday, August 6, 2020, and the check register dated July 1 through July 31, 2020. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Nay, wasn't here for one of them.
Nay.
You're opposed to the consent agenda?
And check register, yeah, from the July 27, I wasn't here for that one, and then the other three are all included in that one.
Okay. Did you get that, Mrs. Berry?
I did.
All right, moving on then to the business report, and we're back with you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you very much. Our first item is approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that needed to be processed. Many of the purchases were to make sure the daily operations move forward as necessary. I'll always share the confirming purchase orders with the board for approval in order to keep transparency regarding our purchases.
Madam Chair.
I didn't hear who that was, I just heard, is Mrs. Krasanik?
That's okay, give it to Nadia.
Go ahead, Mrs. Krasanik, go ahead.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Krasanik, supported by Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number two is approval requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make the purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Madam President.
Mrs. Berry.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition per attachment 4A2.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mrs. Krasanik, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, approval of the MHSAA membership. For many years, districts across Michigan have worked through the Michigan High School Athletic Association to establish a common set of rules for the orderly administration of interscholastic athletic programs which promotes academic integrity and competitive equity. According to the Michigan Attorney General Opinion #4795 of 1977, any local Board of Education which desires to do so may voluntarily join the MHSAA by adopting the rule of the association and agreeing to enforce those rules with respect to the schools.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the membership resolution to join the Michigan High School Athletic Association for the 2020-2021 school year. See attachment 4A3.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by, was that you, Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Supported by Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the membership resolution to join the Michigan High School Athletic Association for the 2020-2021 school year per attachment 4A3. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Ma'am.
I find it very curious that the MHSAA is approving fall sports when we can't use our locker rooms, we can't, you know, there's no close contact, and sports are close contact. I just found it very interesting that they approved fall sports. I don't know if anybody agrees with me.
I certainly do, and I keep waiting to hear that they've canceled everything, and the word's not coming. I mean, major league teams, baseball, football, a lot of them are canceling because of...
And all the college football league just said that they're not going to play this year.
Right.
All college.
Yeah, I don't get it, but...
Very curious to me.
Sure is. Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number four, approval of Michigan Rehabilitation Services, the MRS contract. The Crestwood School District has been working over the past several years with MRS. The partnership improves access to vocational rehabilitation ER services for students with disabilities in secondary education who are interested in becoming employed upon high school completion. This program will enhance the delivery of transition VR services to the target population. MRS and school staff will collaborate on VR services and supports which promote successful employment career outcomes. Students will access a community internship which allows them to transfer the skills learned in the classroom directly to real-life environments and work experiences. The internships will create work opportunities for students which contribute to the resume building and employment skill development. Students will acquire the required soft skills development to effectively transition from school to work. The total cost to the district will be $15,000.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Berry.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year contract with Michigan Rehabilitation Services for the 2020-2021 school year, see attachment 4A4.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year contract with Michigan Rehabilitation Services for the 2020-2021 school year per attachment 4A4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was quite a lot done. Moving on to the personnel report. Actually, we should have done an amended agenda because we do have an amendment for one of the points on here. Dr. Lazar.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well. I hope everybody else is staying healthy and doing well also. The first action item we have today is for probationary non-union teacher contracts. The Crestwood School District and Divine Child Schools are in a cooperative agreement for Crestwood School District to provide the following additional non-core educational services. Each of the teachers who are employed by Divine Child to teach the subject areas listed below will become an employee of Crestwood School District effective the 2020-2021 school year, provided he or she meets all requirements for employment with Crestwood School District. Lauren Page for art and Melissa DeRusso for Spanish.
Madam President.
Mrs. Krasanik?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the probationary non-union teacher contracts for Lauren Page and Melissa DeRusso pending receipt of official transcripts, employer copy of a current teaching certificate, acceptable criminal background check, and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 5A1.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Krasanik, supported by, who was that?
Berry.
Nadia.
Nadia?
Yes.
Thank you. Supported by Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve probationary non-union teacher contracts for Lauren Page and Melissa DeRusso pending receipt of official transcripts, employer copy of a current teaching certificate, acceptable criminal background check, and other employment documentation as required by law for attachment 5A1. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So for these two teachers that are going to be technically employed by Crestwood but working at Divine Child, there's salaries that we're approving right now. These are coming out now, or this salary is included in that over 1.5 that we approved or the board approved earlier in the year for Divine Child's contract.
Yusuf or Penny?
I think, I'm not sure about that one.
Well, the one thing I can say, and Penny can correct me, these are two additional positions above. That's why we're bringing it to the board. Divine Child came to us, they needed two additional positions, and they asked for our support in this process, and it's under the same contract we're under from the previous contract that's been in place. So that's why we brought these two positions. They are on top of the previous positions that were approved by the board.
So they didn't have art or Spanish before this?
They needed additional support in art and Spanish because of their numbers, and therefore that is where this contract comes in place. We don't look at their enrollment. It's whatever they request, and we can support, we will support. Because it's that agreement that we have with Divine Child that the district has had for multiple years. So it just falls into that contract agreement.
But so this is not within that 1.5, this is above and beyond that?
This is above whatever positions were brought to the board prior to. I don't know the number off the top of my head, Penny, I don't know if you know that number off the top of your head.
It is above what we originally brought to the board, but in addition, we'll be grabbing more FTE than what we had last year. So we'll be grabbing approximately 60 FTE more than what we had before.
So it adds to our general fund, as do those other positions.
Anything further from anyone?
If I could, Madam Chair.
Yes.
To summarize then, and to make sure I'm understanding, Penny, so therefore these positions will pay for themselves through the monies that we receive from our agreement with Divine Child and the student count. Is that correct?
They'll pay for them, I'm sorry Penny, go ahead. I was going to say they'll pay for themselves and more.
And more, I was going to say the same.
Typically, and I haven't done all of the calculations, but typically those two teachers will cost the district about $200,000, roughly maybe to a little less. And if we take a figurative conservative count of 50 FTE times $8,000, that's $400,000.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's rough math, obviously, but...
Yes.
That would be double, so that's great.
Is there anything further from anyone?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, moving on to, let's see, action item two.
Action item two is for the appointment of an Arabic teacher for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Renee Underhill. Ms. Underhill earned her bachelor's degree in the Arabic Language and Middle Eastern Studies from George Washington University. She has served as a community engagement specialist for the Birmadcor project in Jordan. She served as the World Language Department Chair at her school in Denver, where she is currently relocated from, and served as a model classroom for world languages. She also planned and delivered daily instruction for Arabic I, Arabic II, Arabic III honors and Arabic language arts as classes, as well as creating an Arabic curriculum for all levels.
Wow.
Madam Chair.
Mrs., yes, Mrs. Berry.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Renee Underhill as the middle school Arabic teacher according to the CFT contract, Schedule A, BA, step... Okay, this is where the...
Five.
...part comes in.
I should say five.
Step five, effective for the 2020 school year, see amended attachment 5A2.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Renee Underhill as the middle school Arabic teacher according to the CFT contract, Schedule A, BA, step five, effective for the 2020-2021 school year per attachment 5A2, amended attachment 5A2. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish she was here so she could speak to us in Arabic. Is she around?
No kidding.
I believe she's watching, though.
Oh, cool.
Very impressive, very impressive. And she did a, she created the curriculum at all levels. It's like, that's impressive. That's impressive. Anything further?
One more question. Are we getting any additional Arabic teachers, or will she be the only one?
We're looking to hire another Arabic teacher for the high school and assessing if there are additional needs at the middle school.
Yes, this really took off, didn't they? Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Was that just...
Somebody opposed?
It was Eddie.
Okay.
Was Eddie opposed?
No, no, he said yes.
Oh, okay.
He's just coming in a little late. Right. Moving on then to, okay, this is a little, this is different than what we've done before. And I think that the reason that we decided to do it this way is to keep, we've had this process open all along, and this is to establish criteria for selection of the candidates to fill the vacancy left by Lynn Senio. So what we need to do is discuss, if you remember when we went to hire the superintendent, we made a list of things we'd like to see, qualities we'd like to see, or knowledge, or whatever we wanted to see in our superintendent. If we could make a list, I started one, it doesn't have to be specific, and we can of course add to it or subtract from it when it comes down to it, but just to give us a starting point of what we're looking for when we go to interview. If I may, I started my list with looking for someone with previous involvement. Have they been, it pretty much speaks for itself, have they been involved? And in what way? Then I wrote interaction. Have they been involved with students? Have they been on committees? Have they, have they... Maybe they're coaches, you know, in what way have they interacted? I wrote feelings about direction. The board is going. Do they feel like we're going in a good direction, a positive direction? And then the catalyst for applying. What was it that made them decide? Some of the, you know, some of the people we may not know, and if they've never come to a school board meeting, we wouldn't know them that way either. So, you know, I would like to know, what was it that made them decide that they wanted to put in the vacation? We can use some of those, and we can add to it. If anyone has any other thoughts they'd like to add.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to add, I did read some of those, and I like those, but I'd like to add, I'd like to know the individual's highest level of education they completed to be on there.
I disagree.
We could, yeah, I think this is something that when we should all agree on something before we add it, like with mine, don't feel, if you don't care what the catalyst was, and the majority doesn't care, then we take it off the list. Is the highest level of education something that we want on the list?
The Board of Education, that should be like our number one thing.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Hold on, because we're going to go one at a time. Colleen, and then Ed.
It's never been a requirement to sit on a school board. Sometimes I think, and this is just me, that a parent who has children in the district, and that has had children in the district, we make policy. It has nothing to do with our educational background. If we're involved and we have a good feeling for the district, I think, and states, and this has been the rule since 22 years that I've been on the board, these things that they list here are more than enough to sit on a school board. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ed, and then who is next? Is that you, Nadia?
It is.
Okay, Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to agree with what my colleague just mentioned, Vice President Krasanik, that I have also been on the board for several years, and those have not been any of the requirements. I do feel that what you have stated is very important. Someone that is involved, someone that is engaged, and someone that has had communications with all three levels of our district. So I'm going to say that what you've brought forward definitely has a lot of bearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia.
Okay, what I wanted to say is that work experience matters to me more than the education because sometimes when you're educated, you don't have the common sense. And work experience should trump everything. If you've been experienced, you've been in the trenches, you've seen how a school operates, you've seen, you've been involved in your child's education, you've been involved in all the functions that happen, you've recruited, you've done all that. I think that should trump the educational part. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Kaminsky.
Since to run for school board, or to run for mayor, or to run for commissioner, or to run for senator, does not require that you have a certain level of education. I do not feel that I can change what the regulations are, nor should I. However, we can all take that in consideration when we look at the letters and the intents that have been sent to us, but that certainly should not be a prerequisite.
Okay, I tend to agree. The majority seems to feel the same way, so we won't add that to the list.
And Madam President?
Yes.
There was a statement made quite a while ago about, if someone could help me out, that, oh, it was about having a higher, what was the word? Oh, my goodness.
Pedigree, pedigree. I can remind you.
Pedigree. How dare, how dare someone say they have a higher pedigree than another human being. Unbelievable. That was so offensive to me and so hurtful, I couldn't believe it.
No.
And that's why I don't agree with this educational thing.
Yeah.
We all have, we all graduated from high school. We all know all about it.
Well, you can't have it, I agree, and you can't have it both ways. You can't say, "We're a school board, we want to know what your educational background is, and we want you to have at least a, you know, four-year degree in college." But for another position, another...
Higher.
...position, you don't have to have any degree other than your diploma. I think that when you're on the school board, I think experience does, experience is a whole lot more than anything else. And as far as the pedigree thing, I'm not even going to acknowledge that, it was ignorant. So I'm not...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And Colleen, I don't know who said that, but yeah, nobody should say that. But I'm just really surprised, none of the items we have listed are considered prerequisites. These are all just items that we are looking at considering. You don't have to, I mean, as we all know, you don't have to have a BA or a PhD or anything to be on the school board. But I'm just surprised at everyone, that you wouldn't want this to be something for you to either know, consider, look at, because a PhD, or a master's, or a bachelor's, or... I would like to, I mean, I would think you guys would like to know that. We're the Board of Ed, and it's nice to know the work experience. It's nice to know what teamwork they've done. It's nice to know what projects they've worked on.
We're going to be able to see, you'll be able to see...
Madam Chair.
...new resume. Hang on one second, Ed. I want to make it clear that the items that I rattled off are my thoughts. They weren't, this is what I came up with when I was going through my packet, and I thought...
I mean, the PhD was one of the prerequisites we wanted for Dr. Muthalum, right?
That's something we decided for the superintendent. Apparently, the board feels in unison that this is not something we need to know as far as what, you can read it in their resume, but if someone is a mom that's been a mom, hasn't gone to school, raised four children, done a great job, been involved in their education, and decide they want to stay involved and become, run for school board, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that.
And so, if I'm, excuse me, Madam President, if I'm not mistaken, this isn't just the Crestwood School District that doesn't require educational background. I think that goes across the board.
Right.
It's not just Crestwood that...
Yeah, Colleen, you don't have to have it to be elected or anything like that. But in the situation, I mean, we're in a unique situation where we're able to, you know, list some items that we'd like to know about before we consider them, and I would think that their education level would be one that we would like to know, consider, you know, where they place at.
Okay.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Berry.
Madam Chair.
Hang on one second, Ed, you're right after Nadia.
Again, I just want to say, just because you have a piece of paper, it doesn't mean that you have the brains and the people skills to do something that someone that doesn't have it can do.
True.
And the experience.
Mr. Garcia, go ahead.
Madam Chair, again, I'm going to, you know, state that I agree with what you have provided, or I should say that I like the information that you have provided. And I think that any candidate that wishes to put it in their resume, they'll put it in there, we'll see it. But it should not be a requirement of any sorts.
Mm-hmm, I agree too. Okay, does anyone have any other thoughts about something we might want to have on the list that we'd be looking for?
I would like to know whether or not they currently have children in the school district or have had children in the school district.
Okay, how's everybody feel about that?
I would check with the attorney on that. I don't know, that's personal. I don't know that you could ask that.
We're asking if they have a degree. What's the difference?
Yeah.
It's a big difference. When you ask, I mean, that's like asking them, "Are you pregnant? Do you have kids? Are you married?" I mean, these are not job questions. Well, maybe your question, Mrs. Ansonik, asking what the catalyst was for their interest speaks enough about it, and the answer that the nominee will give will say, "I have children," yes, okay.
That was my intent. You're welcome. Mr. Garcia.
No, thank you. It's already been answered. Thank you for stating that.
Perfect. Anything, any other, anything that's jumping out at anyone that we should kind of consider establishing criteria? I mean, we know the basics, we know the law, they can't be a criminal, there's a lot of, you know, obvious things. If there's anything that I haven't got, anything I didn't put down here, does anyone want to jump in and share that?
I just want to say, if I can, I would like to see somebody that's been a leader, that's taken things on, taken some things on on their own without direction to help do what is best for students.
So leadership quality?
Leadership qualities, definitely.
Okay, I think that's probably a good idea. Is everyone else in agreement? Nobody has?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
All are welcome. I just want to include that, all are welcome. We don't want to exclude anybody.
Right. All right, so pretty much... Right. All right, so pretty much right now, what we have is, um, and, and from these, we can expand. They're big. I left them big so we could expand. Um, previous involvement in this, in, in the school district with the students or whatever, previous involvement, uh, was one. A second one was interaction um, with students on committees, with teachers. Uh, I'd like to know the feelings about the, their feelings about the direction that we're going in, um, and the direction that the, the district's going in.
Madam President, do you have me online?
I, I have you and I hear you.
Okay, I was just knocked off and I had to call myself back in, so I just wanted to make sure.
You're here.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, um, uh, what was the catalyst for their applying? What, what was it that made them decide they wanted to put in for this opening and leadership qualities? Um.
One more thing, Madam Chair, I'm just thinking about something. Somebody that's really aware of the culture and climate of the district, the buildings, where we were, where we're moving, um, if we can include that in there. What do you know about?
How about, um?
It's fine, Kathy.
Yeah, how, how do you say that? Where are we going to put that? I'm having, I'm having trouble figuring out how to word that or where to place it.
Well, what do they know about the district? You know, I, I, have they had any experience with, uh, collaboration with the district, with the community? I mean, where are we with that?
Would that be previous involvement?
Well, they, I want to see if they know what has been happening. What has the culture been? What has the climate been? Where are we? Where are we moving? I mean, have they been following up with us to see what's been happening?
Okay, um, okay, help me word this so that it's palatable.
Have an understanding of, of
About awareness of, uh,
What, uh, direction the district has been heading.
Yeah, well, I've got that down there already, um, feelings about
Yeah, that's what I
board go, the board's going in. How about, um, the, the climate, the, um, not the climate, the
Cultural and climate, yeah.
The cultural climate? Aware of the cultural climate? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay, is that all right with everyone?
I've never seen it so good. Yeah, that's fine.
And also, somebody that would really know what the challenges are that the district is facing. Have they been following up? I mean, we want to know that they know the meat and potatoes of what, what's been happening. Or are they just coming on to do this just to do it?
Yeah, don't forget, we're going to have questions that we ask.
Okay.
Um, these are things that we're, and that'll be answered in the questions that are, that are, that are being asked, however it's worded. Um, so a lot of these will be. This is just kind of, this is, this is kind of a brainstorming, basically, what are we looking for? Um, and I, I think we've got a pretty good idea. Um.
I do too.
Good. This, is there anything else anyone wants to add? Okay, then, um, being that this is an action item for some bizarre reason.
Actually, Madam Chair, um, how is it going, what's the process going to be like? Um, are we going to have our set of questions, uh, beforehand? That they'll be the same set that we ask each candidate? Or, um, you know, like we did with the superintendent, for example, or how is this going to be different or the same?
Um, from what I under, we have a set of questions. Um, I cannot say they'll be the same questions. Uh, I mean, they, that we have now. Every candidate will be asked the same questions. I hesitate to, um, no one, no one has the questions yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I hesitate to cut loose with those because, um, I think it's better just to keep those, um, in, within the office until we start the interview process so that no one has a heads up, uh, on what the questions might be.
It makes it fair.
Yeah, I have a question about that. Are we doing, we're doing this virtual, I take it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so how would that be fair? Is it going to be public? How is that fair that one individual will be asked the questions?
Yeah.
And then the other candidates will know the questions?
That's a good point.
How would we do that? Would we stream record it? What would we do?
Um, I agree with that. That's a real problem.
Yeah.
That may be a legal question that we may need to ask counsel.
Yeah, it could, it could be, could very well be, you know, we can't scramble the questions because you, you don't want, you want to ask them all the same thing in fairness.
Yeah, but if you're number four and you've heard the answers
I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying. Yeah, um.
That's tough. I agree.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have to figure out how we're going to do this.
Yeah.
Um.
Maybe, could we record it and then, um, do it individually and then show it at our meeting, all the recordings, so that each person is, asks the questions privately with the board and that person?
This is how it was done when we interviewed the superintendents. They all got to, everyone got to see everybody's questions answered. If you recall, it was even be recorded, streamlined.
Not under a pandemic, which causes to go virtual though now.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how it was done too when Lynn interviewed for the, uh, clerk.
Again, we were not under a pandemic, which now we are currently virtual.
Thank you.
For Lynn, she was.
Well, that's the city. I don't care how the city does their, their choosing.
All I know is when we hired Dr. Musalem, he was not in the room to hear the other person. Well, he was the first one and he, so that doesn't apply to him, but
You're right, he wasn't there to hear anyone after him.
No, no one was, no one was there to hear until we called them in.
They were kept in a secret chamber, yeah.
Yeah.
And Madam President?
Yes, Ed Garcia.
Yes, again, I, I, I think that our best bet is to make sure that we check with counsel so that we have at least a legal opinion. Um, yes, we did have the meetings with Dr. Musalem as well as the other candidates, but we were not under the conditions that we are currently in. So I do believe that we should at least get the legal opinion so that we do not, uh, you know, fall under any violations. As well, as well, we are providing a fair process for all candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I would like to throw out what Sue said and reiterate, um, if the questions take, say, 15 minutes per candidate, we have four candidates. If we choose to keep all four, um, then that would be one after another. We'd have one come in at a, like five o'clock and then the next one would come in at, you know, 5:25, so that they would be separate. They wouldn't hear each other. Um, and then we could just compare. We'll, we'll have to see. I mean, maybe our lawyer has other ideas of how other districts have done it. Maybe it's not a good deal.
This is an unusual circumstance.
Yeah, it is. Madam Chair, can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Maybe we have all of them report to the board office and, um, you know, they're six feet apart there and they interview from that, um, conference room or
Very good.
They're all there with no, um, they shouldn't have any technology with them.
Right.
And that way, that would be the fairest process.
I, that's, I like that. I like it.
So we would all be at the board office?
Not necessarily. The candidates would because of keeping everyone six feet apart. And then we can do a virtual meeting and then the candidate would be the only one in the room. Well, and while they're waiting, they could not have any technology, so they could not be viewing the live stream. Was that what you were saying, Mrs. Berry?
Correct. Maybe at the, at the middle school at Riverside, plenty of room in the library.
Excuse me, the only thing that worries me about that is I can hear everything that's said in that board office from the room that we were, we had our meetings in.
Tissue walls.
Did they sound through it yet or, because everybody will hear the question.
No, Dr. Musalem, you look like you're ready to bust because you want to say something so badly. No? You're just happy not to be involved in this conversation. Gotcha. Um, all right, let's hit, let's, uh, wrap the, the, um, criteria up at least. Um, and have a motion if, if you're so inclined that we
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Krasanik.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the criteria for selection of a new board member.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Krasanik, supported by Mrs. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the criteria, uh, for selection of a new board member. And, um, we'll make sure that that's all, that that's written up for Kristin to add to the minutes or wherever she adds them. Um, uh, is there any other discussion regarding this? I know we have to get the, the logistics of it together still. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to, uh, candidates selected to interview, um, for the Board of Education trustee. Would you all get the applications or the resumes?
Yeah.
I did, yes.
Okay, um, is, we've got four people that are interested in, in, uh, the position. Um, I don't know the best way to do this. I guess, um, I'm in favor of interviewing all four of them. Is there anyone that feels that we shouldn't interview all four for any reason?
No. No, I think everybody should be interviewed.
I do too.
Okay, well, that was easy. Um, then, uh, someone to make the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the selected candidates to interview for the Board of Education vacant position created by Ms. Lynn Sinia's resignation.
Support.
Support.
A motion for Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by, who was that?
Barry.
Everybody.
Everybody, everybody was, Mrs. Berry, that, um, the Crestwood Board of Education approves the selected candidates to interview for the Board of Education vacant position created by Ms. Lynn Sinia's resignation. At this time, do you think it's appropriate to say the names of the candidates? They haven't, um, requested confidentiality. Do you think we need to do that or?
I think that would be appropriate. They're, they're applying for the position.
Anyone see a problem with it?
I mean, is it necessary? Is it required? Is that, uh,
It's not required, but we did, we're saying, um, the selected candidates, I guess we could leave it at the selected candidates and then let Kristin field all the phone calls, who the, who the selected candidates are.
My concern would be that we haven't specifically asked them if we can publicly give their name and then if they're not, well, they're going to be interviewed and everyone's going to know who they are. So I guess it doesn't matter.
No, I agree.
It's up to you guys. I don't, I don't, I don't care.
It's a public position. I mean, if you have a problem with your name being said, maybe you shouldn't apply.
I agree.
Yep. So everyone wants the people, the four candidates? Okay.
Yeah.
Was that a no?
No, that was a yes.
Oh, all right. Um, so we have, um, a Ms. Najah Janoon that's put in for the position. Um, I'm so sorry if I messed these names up. Ramaz Canaf, Canafur, did I say that right, you guys? Harp, Susan Regal, showing, um, interest, wanting to apply for the open position for right now. So, uh, we will get in touch. Wait a minute, we didn't vote on that, did we?
Not yet.
No, we didn't. Um, is there any further discussion regarding this, regarding the candidate specifically? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, that is finished. That's good. We're the one step closer. All right, now we're moving to, there's nothing under the compensatory education report. There never is. I think you guys just moved that up and stuck it in there.
No, thank you.
Now, we come to the superintendent's report.
Oh, I liked it. I liked it when I didn't have to say anything. All right, here we go. All right, so we have, um, Madam Chair, Board of Education, thank you for your support. We have one action item and two informational items. Well, the action item that we have is concerning the Fall 2020, 2021 reopening plans. The Fall Task Force meetings and discussions took place on June 23rd, June 30th, July 7th, and July 14th. The Board of Education discussed the tentative plans on June 22nd, July 27th, and August 6th. At this point, I am turning it back over to the Board of Education, uh, for a recommendation for how the board would like to start the 2020, 2021 school year with this current pandemic, COVID-19.
Okay, I would, um, like to offer, having, having been in on the meeting, um, as we all were, and getting a feel for what I think the board is, um, I mean, we haven't really talked about it outside of the meeting, but getting a feel for what the board is feeling, um, I would like to recommend that the action, I'm not making a motion, but just recommend that the act, the recommended action be that the Crestwood Board of Education or the Crestwood School District, um, reopens online, re, to, um, reopens online with reevaluation at each trimester. That can be changed if, I mean, that's just a starting point of how you want this motion to read.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education recommend that Crestwood Schools reopen online with reevaluation each trimester.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mrs. Krasanik, that the Crestwood Schools, um, I don't remember exactly what you said.
Um, that the Crestwood School District reopen online with reevaluation each trimester.
Oh, right, okay, that the Crestwood Schools re, um, open online with reevaluation at each trimester, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say this is one of the toughest decisions as a board member that I've ever had to make. Although I feel as though kids need to be with other kids, feel very strongly about that, but I had to be honest with myself. If my children were still in the dis, in the schools, I couldn't in good faith send them back right now. There's too much danger. And I, and I have a heart for all the kids in this district and I wouldn't want one child to get sick and they're reporting now that children are catching it. So, that was my decision.
Yeah.
Madam President.
Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I'd like to also echo those sentiments, um, that this was, uh, a very difficult decision to make. Um, I, I took into consideration what the administration has brought forward to us, which has been very, very, uh, thorough in the presentations on all aspects of going back into the building as well as the online learning, uh, and then of course, our reevaluation. I'm also taking into consideration, excuse me, for what has been shown, uh, local and national news regarding this pandemic. Uh, I'm also, uh, just concerned that I would not want to be, uh, for example, the district in it, in, in, outside of Atlanta, Georgia, where students are photographing, taking Snapchats and so on and so forth, showing others not, uh, following what school districts are, are requiring for them. And then, uh, lastly, uh, in good conscience, I, I, I as well would not be able to send my daughters to school knowing that this is out there, um, just for the mere fact that I would not want them to spread anything or to contract anything. So I have to take into consideration the safety of the, uh, 4,000 students within our district and, um, uh, this was a decision, again, that was not easy, uh, but in good consciousness for the safety, the health and the welfare of not only our students, but as well as the staff, support staff, the staff and our administration. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Garcia.
Madam Chair, I, I would probably say the same thing. I still do have kids going there and it's extremely difficult to decide, especially for the young one that likes social interaction, but catching the, amongst them is inevitable. So I think we're going to have disrupted, um, education if they're there. I think that's just inevitable if that's what we do. Um, so yeah, this is very hard.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with, uh, this decision. I think it's a safe decision and, um, it's the right thing to do for right now and it's, it's, you know, the situation is fluid. Um, pandemic could just go away, as, um, our president has said, it might just go away. So wouldn't that be fabulous? But anyway, it But any way it goes, it's going to be changing and we, we will change with it. And believe me, Dr. Musalem will have his fingers on the pulse of what's happening because that's what he does. Isn't that right, sir? He will know. Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, as you know, and the conversations with the board and many sleepless nights, uh, you as the board president have multiple times told me, Yusuf, stop trying to control what you can't control because we all want our kids back in school. You have made, you know, you're making a, a, a decision here that I don't think any of us ever thought we would ever be in a situation. Tell you what, when I applied for superintendent, I didn't think there'd be some, uh, pandemic was the furthest thing from my mind.
Well, you've had, you've had an interesting, uh, beginning to your career here, haven't you? Good heavens.
You know, but God, you know, I, I do want to say to the community, no matter which way this vote goes, all seven board members, even when trustee Sinia, Sinia was still on the board, everyone has been part of this conversation. You have helped us, you know, navigate these rough waters. Um, so whatever decision the board makes, we will then turn our attention one hundred and ten percent in that direction. And I know Dr. Lazar and Mrs. Morgan, as well as others, know that we have received commitment from everyone that no matter what direction we go, we're going to be all hands on deck and you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can.
That's comforting to hear.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do want to say thank you to the administration. Thank you to the staff. Uh, you guys have been wonderful in providing us with the information. And I know how hard you have worked to get the plans for whether we go virtual, whether we go in person. So I know that's taken up a lot of your time. You've done this on your own and thank you so much for doing that. Uh, it was a very, very tough decision, but with the numbers at five million, um, the right decision had to be made. So let's vote on it and thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Anything further? Hearing nothing, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, Board, thank you for your, your, your support, your, your guidance, but more importantly, your trust. Um, we, I, we, we, I just want to say this to the community. We have to do this together. We're going to be one team. I, 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 I know it's not going to be perfect, but I assure you, we're going to be striving for greatness and we got to work together. We will, we will have our, our hands on the pulse of this.
Right. And, and you know, as in everything, this is, these are untested waters. This is something new that we've, no one's ever dealt with this before. So we're going to find things where, that we have to tweak and we're gonna, you know, things are going to come to our attention perhaps we didn't think about. I can't imagine one thing that Dr. Musalem hasn't thought about. Um, but it's, uh, it, it, for right now, it's the best decision that I believe we could have made. I'm comfortable with it. Um, and it's, it's, it's mostly, the comfort level comes from the community. And they're, they're sharing their opinion and they're sharing their, their, their fears and their thoughts and, and, uh. Okay, so that's, that's done. Thank you. Uh, moving on then to informational items, Doctor.
Uh, Madam Chair, I think, uh, trustee Kaminsky had her hand up. I'm not sure if you saw it on the screen. My apologies.
I, I did. I just wanted, for the community that have not been involved in all these discussions, um, and Dr. Musalem, maybe you can add to it, but, um, if the governor deems us into a category five, which is where we're all allowed to go back to school, this is not something that if she announces on a Wednesday, everyone's going to be at school Thursday, it's going to be something that'll be gradual. And obviously we'll follow that, but we do need time to prepare and get, you know, situations in place. The other thing is I want the community to know if your child needs to see a counselor or talk to a counselor, all the services that we provide as a, uh, school district are still available. It's just going to be different, just like this meeting is different. And Dr. Musalem and administration will get all of that information out to everybody.
Thank you.
Trustee Kaminsky, yes. And I do want to add, um, we scheduled a, a meeting for tomorrow, for tomorrow, uh, because we knew there would be a vote today to shift gears if need be. And we're, we're, we're already on it. Like I said, we have been preparing for both options. But now that we know it'll be online, we're going to switch gears. Where our focus is going to be a hundred and ten percent online now, and we're going to start that tomorrow, um, to add to what we currently have produced for the public.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Musalem, um, the meeting we had the other day where you and, uh, Dr. Lazar took down like five or six questions from, um, the audience, um, are you going to circle back, uh, as for resolution on those or already done?
Uh, no, we haven't yet because we're waiting for tonight's meeting and then for our meeting with the team tomorrow. And then we're going to come back. What we'll be doing is, um, any of those questions that needs an announcement, we will send something out to answer those questions. And we're also going to, um, by the end of the week, have something out to the community on where we're at and next steps and possible timeline. But we want to make sure we sit with the administration team. Because, you know, uh, the principals know already, we've had these conversations that, you know, in order for us to be successful, they're going to have to take the lead for each of their buildings, but they're going to work together. No one's going to be working in separation. Dr. Lazar, I'm sorry.
Okay, and just add to that, um, some of the requests, um, as I reference back to them right now, um, are things that would need to be discussed with the union when we do our letter of agreement with them. So a resolution to those probably can't be reached until we fully put that together and, and gotten input, um, from all parties ahead of time.
Okay. Great.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Krzanik.
I just wanted to say this has got to be a Herculean effort. I, uh, with the faculty, God bless them, for, for Dr. Musalem, for the administrators, everybody that's going to have to piece together teaching our children online is a daunting task. And I, I, I pray for all of them that this, this goes well and we can get back to school as soon as possible.
Thank you.
I think, I think, I, I agree, uh, Mrs. Krzanik, um, but our kids are so, so savvy compared to dinosaurs like us that they, when it comes to online, there's nothing for them. They, they suck it up like sponges. So.
I can't stand it. You're so right. My little three-year-old knew more, I, sometimes than I did.
Yeah. I think, uh, I think it might even, some, some kids are different kind of learners and we might find that, we might learn things from this. We might find that there are students that need to learn online, that it, that's, that is, that's the way they learn. So we'll just, this is a positive experience, the way we look at everything, the crest would weigh and move forward, make the best of it. And, uh, do the best we can for our kids. Um, okay, if there's nothing further on that, we have, um, informational items, sir.
All right. So thank you, Madam Chair. So we have, um, uh, retirement and a resignation. So I want to congratulate Martha Ray, paraprofessional who has retired after eighteen years with the Crestwood School District. We appreciate her support and her, uh, her work towards helping our children. And we also want to, uh, thank Ms. Monal Ghul. Uh, she has resigned as paraprofessional and we want to thank her for her service to the Crestwood School District.
Yes.
Uh, superintendent's message, Madam Chair and Board. I want to, for donations, I want to thank and, uh, Mr. Ali Safiadine from Doc Shop Pro, who generously donated two hundred face shields and five thousand two hundred and fifty masks.
Wow.
For our inventory. So we do appreciate their donation and also.
Kind.
I want to remind everyone that technically, the first day of school is Monday, August thirty-first, first, twenty twenty. This will be a half day of school for all students, but with the, uh, recent vote by the board, that will still be the first day of school, but it's going to look different. More information to come.
Yes, and if it was the way I said it was going to be, they wouldn't go back till November.
Oh, yeah. We're not going to do that. So those, those are my updates, Madam Chair. And I want to thank you and the Board of Education for your support during these difficult times. But we appreciate everything that you do for our community and for our team and staff.
Thank you. Can you relax for a minute now? Can you relax for a day, maybe?
Uh, maybe, maybe, maybe five minutes.
Maybe five minutes. I called, I called Dr. Musalem after the last meeting to get his feel on the discussion we had and the, and the people calling in and what he got, what kind of feel he got, uh, um, from it. And he didn't answer and he always does. And he was out on his bike, uh, burning off energy.
I rode my bike, I rode my bike from my house to Crestwood High School just to check on the football team. I figured I'll work and exercise.
Oh, my gosh. Um, all right, at this time, I will take public comments. David, if you're there, if, if, has anyone called in?
Stanzenek, there is one comment right now from Mrs. Fawaz. It's a question. Why will it take so long to transition back to in-person learning? Will teachers' classrooms be set up and ready to go? I can understand it taking a week, but why three to four weeks?
And now I, I can answer that. So we're estimating, we haven't put a timeframe on how long it will take us to transition back. So I don't know if it'll take us a week or three to four weeks. The classrooms will be ready.
Yeah.
Um, and they are ready right now. But what we have to understand is moving, you know, over four thousand children from online learning to back in the classroom is going to take time in terms of transitioning from online learning to face-to-face instruction, ensuring that we have a smooth return to start so that people are gradually coming back to school and staff can build that resilience to get the students back into the classroom. Um, and I will tell you, if I was, you know, right now to start brainstorming on how that transition would lurk, work, it would start with our preschool, early childhood through third grade, and then we would slowly gradually bring students back in from our lowest level to our highest level because of where the needs are. This will also give parents an opportunity to slowly gradually bring their students in. Um, so because, and again, it's going to be something that we've never dealt with before. So we want to make sure that we have everything lined up and ready to go. So I don't know if it would take a week or if it would take three to four weeks, but we would plan for a gradual return to school. Um, but we won't interrupt the instruction because those that are online will continue to do so.
Thank you. Anything else, David, or is that it?
Nope, that's the only question. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And at this time, we'll take any board comments or questions for administration.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nadia, Mrs. Nadia.
Um, I, I read that really nice letter from Mr. and Mrs., is it Balmer or Beumer? That, I just wanted to thank them. That was very kind to hear such nice words during a pandemic and to, uh, give back that nice positive feedback about the Highview staff. So I just wanted to make sure that they under, they, they know that we did receive the letter and to acknowledge that and to thank them for their kind words.
Well, excellent. It's amazing, um, how people are pulling together and you're getting, I, I mean, you, you're just getting positive feedback. And it's, we're all in this together feeling and, you know, we are. Um, and it's, 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 it's having an effect on everyone. Everyone's kind of pulling together. It's, it's, uh, nice to see. Anybody else want to, uh, make a comment or ask a question?
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Krzanik.
Just real quick, um, I, you know, I still feel horrible for the seniors, even though we did do a, a, a graduation ceremony. Um, I, I'm worried about the seniors this year. Like there's, you know, the football homecoming game, the king and queen. I, all those things are so important in your senior year prom. And I just hope that we take that very seriously coming up and, and, um, hopefully can do something for these kids. I just feel terrible for the last class that graduated. And I'm going to feel the same way about this one if we don't take it upon ourselves, uh, plan ahead.
Um, Mrs. Krzanik, if I may, I just have to say that it was one of the nicest graduation ceremonies I've ever attended.
I agree. I absolutely agree.
It was beautiful. Um, to see the look on the mom and dad's faces and the tears, it was one of the most, I'm telling you, heartwarming experiences I've ever had. It was very, very, very nice. So.
And this year.
And I hope we can do.
Yeah, this year we'll be a little more prepared. We were.
Yeah.
We were really caught blinds by all of this. Yeah. So, so, you know, I'm sure that the, um, high school principal's already taking notes and figuring things out. I know there are parents that are always involved, that are already involved. But when it came down to it, boy, they, they pulled it together and they made it absolutely beautiful. And I've heard nothing but positive, positive feedback on that. So, good job.
Actually, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Now that she brought that up, it just triggered a, uh, question. Um, the monies that was, uh, saved for the twenty twenty seniors, like their prom, like their party, like their, all of those things. I don't remember if we talked about this. Is that going to be used for the next class or saved for them, like maybe for a re, five-year reunion party or, you know, something?
I don't think it's a five-year, you know, do you know?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's up to, that's up to the senior leadership to make that determination. So right now, it'll be moved into an account. If it's not already an account, then it's saved for them. And if they choose to save it for a reunion, if they choose to donate it, whatever they choose to do, um, we'll, we'll support them in that process. But no, it's not touched by anyone but the senior leadership for that class.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Now, but we will charge an interest fee. No, I'm just joking. Patty looked at me like, what?
Um, all right, is there anything further? Hearing none, we'll have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion for Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by.
Aye.
Mrs. Barry to be adjourned at eight oh seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Have a great evening. We adjourn.
Good evening. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Goodbye.
Bye.
See you.